Good morning, everyone. I'm Vice Mayor Thelma Williams and I'm joined today by Councilwoman Laura Stark and Deborah.
I got a new name. It's okay. Deborah Pastor.
Deborah Pastor. And I understand that Councilman Valens Wayless is on his way. It's a test to see if you're paying attention.
Yes.
Sorry, ladies.
That's okay.
First item is the approval of the minutes of April 18th. Does everyone have a chance to review? Any corrections, amendments, or a motion?
So moved for item one for approval of the minutes of the transportation infrastructure meeting of April 18th, 2018.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consent, this items two and three, does anyone have any questions? Motion?
Move items two and three.
And I will second. In that case, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Items four through seven are for information only. Do you need any information or want to discuss them? Staff report?
Aye.
Okay, we will go to item eight with the South Central Transit Oriented Development Business Assistance and Land Use Planning Services grant.
Yes, so thoughtful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Here today to present on this item is Jesus Sapien, the Light Rail Administrator, and Marcus Coleman, the Transit Oriented Development Grant Administrator. So I'll turn it over to Jesus.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. Thank you for having us here today. Yes, this is a long title, but it is a very important item. As you know, we will be undertaking the longest extension that we have built for South, for Light Rail to date, down in South Central. And what we want to provide is an overview of a FTA grant we received to conduct business assistance and land use planning along the alignment. So we'll talk about what the purpose of the contract is and who the recommended award is and follow up with any questions you may have. I'll introduce Marcus Coleman, the Transit Oriented Development Grant Manager specifically for this project, who will give you an overview of the recommended contract award.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of the subcommittee. As Jesus mentioned, we want to give a presentation on the recommendation for the TOD grant for the South Central Extension. With the award of this grant, we'll be able to implement lessons learned from the original 20 miles of Light Rail. We were able to provide business assistance as part of that project and we were able to gain or garner great positive feedback from that experience, as well as looking at best practices. With our Northwest Extension Phase One, we were able to implement business assistance strategies that we received very positive feedback and we would like to implement those strategies along the South Central Corridor. Just briefly want to mention that this is the first time that we've been able to receive a FTA grant to do this type of work along one of our extensions, being the TOD grant. And it's going to allow us to focus on early action business assistance, which will make this a more robust corridor and more robust program that we offer. Not only providing the business assistance that we traditionally provide during our construction process, we'll also be able to provide early action business assistance prior to construction. So with the contract budget, we were able to receive the grant on an amount of $2 million with a $400,000 local match, bringing the total contract budget to a amount not to exceed $2.4 million. And so we looked at the scope of the contract. The scope of the contract would be for early action business assistance, TOD planning and visioning, and partnering. One of the key factors is we would like to partner with the agencies that provide resources along this corridor to make sure that what we provide to them in forms of business assistance and land use planning is the optimal resources. So the process, we went through a RFP process, which is a competitive process, which allows us to evaluate firms' overall qualifications through multiple criteria. We received two proposals. We had a panel of six members. Three were from the city of Phoenix, one from Valley Metro, who's our partner in Light Rail, and also two from the community. It was very important for us to have community members be a part of this evaluation committee due to the fact that this project is going to greatly impact that community. So out of a maximum score of 1,000, Promise Arizona and Gold Evans scored 897 points and Kalson scored 680 points. And with that evaluation, we are recommending the firm of Promise Arizona and Gold Evans. They also have a list of subcontractors who are all local that work with them, which is Local First Arizona, Wilson &amp; Company, J2 Engineering and Environmental, Center of Neighborhood Technology, Friendly House, and Hustle Phoenix. The previous actions taken on this is that this item was taken to CTC and was voted for approval to be recommended to this subcommittee for a vote of eight to two for execute a contract with Promise Arizona, Gold Evans to perform this work, and this was done on April 26. And we're hopeful with approval today of the recommendation and approval from City Council that we'll be able to have a contract in place by May of this year with completion of work by May of 2020.
Do you have any specifics on how we're going to do this? What are you going to offer businesses and people along the line?
So the first act of the consultant who receives the contract, well, they will have to do a business assessment of all the businesses along the corridor. So they will meet with the businesses and work with them, do a, complete a business assessment, and then develop a business assistance plan for each of the businesses. Once that is done, then we'll start to implement those strategies, as well as they have a success matrix that they'll have to maintain to make sure that those strategies are working for the businesses along the corridor.
Could you give some, a few things of what you expect the businesses to ask for?
Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee, we know that in the past when things that we have seen great results from is our marketing campaigns. We have a shop-on campaign that has been, has received great success, and we've done that on our other corridors, as well as some other areas outside of the city of Phoenix. Those are some of the things that we look at as far as radio and other type of advertising media. We work with Valley Metro on the business assistance that they provide during construction, which makes sure that they have access and signage and things of that nature as well. We have received several feedbacks because right now we're currently in the process of doing one-on-one business meetings with the businesses along those, along the corridor. And we have seen, received several requests for ways to mitigate some of the loss of revenues that they may receive during construction. And so those are things that we're looking at options, and that's why it's so important for us to work with the nonprofits to try to leverage their, the funding that they have available.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I have several questions. So can you go back to the slide? Continue, right there. The question was, what are the expectations? I'm going to use the term expectations. Or what are the requirements for this contract? And one item that you said was business assessment. Out of that whole group, out of that collective, who has done business assessments before? How do we know their expertise? How do we know the capability of being able to pull this piece of South Central and be able then to do what's, what we need to happen for that area to be vibrant and be able then to roll out what is needed in order for those mom-and-pop family stores to survive? Because South Central and South is a totally different animal than it was North Central and 19th Avenue. There were businesses, very well-established businesses, that had strong business plans, where I worry about South Central because we have a lot of mom-and-pop stores that have been the heart of South Phoenix that I'm worried about in the sense of, for the future of surviving that space. And so, out of this whole group, because we are asking for a strong business assessment, what does that look like and who has the expertise in the group?
So if I could just jump in here, Councilwoman Pastor, your questions are very well-placed. The business assistance piece is very, very important and is very critical, which is why we sought this grant from the FTA to supplement what the city has already been doing and planned to do for businesses along South Central. So there are some city resources, along with Valley Metro, that would, that would be dedicated to the business assistance. So this is actually, the grant from the Federal Transit Administration is actually on top of that. And so I think we do have representatives here from the recommended team that can probably give some information about your questions about their expertise and answer some of those questions about who is best on their team to provide that. They've certainly put together a team to do that, and that was all part of the evaluation. Teams like, you know, members like Local First Arizona and others who have experience with that kind of work. The other aspect to this grant is the transit-oriented development planning and land use planning, and so that's another piece of this that comes into play. We do have Josh Bignark here from the Planning and Development Department, so if you have any questions on that aspect, we can have Josh assist with that as well. But I don't know if we want to give the opportunity for the, for the representatives of the firm to answer some of those specific questions about their expertise.
Do you want someone to answer?
Yeah. I mean, because you're asking me to vote on a large contract and you're asking me to move forward items that then, when I get up on the dais, and I'm just going to be clear, then turns around and tells me, when I start to ask other questions, and then turn around, staff turns around and says, "Well, this got voted out of the committee, this got voted out of da-da-da, so you should be okay with it." So I'm going to ask my hard questions up front so that then I'm okay with it when I sit on the dais to do the final vote. Because when I do the final vote on the dais and I start to push back and ask questions, then what's the point? So really, I'm going to start doing my committee work, which I've always done, but I'm going to start now really pushing. So yes, I would like that.
So if we, Representative from Promise Arizona, to come up to the table and help answer those questions, Ms. Petra Falcone.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council. And you asked a really good question, Councilwoman Pastor. And I was, as you were saying that, I was writing notes, okay, there, what do we have to offer? Well, our team, as you can see, is a very diverse team, and collectively, we have over 300 years working in this community at different levels, whether it's with businesses, whether it's with families, whether it's with schools in the neighborhoods. And also, over, a lot of our team members also, actually, we have a collective years of 200 actually living here. So we call this community our home, and we call a lot of the people living here our friends and neighbors. And I, what I would say, and I would know that many of our partners would say, is that we've been doing a lot of this work already. And in fact, at Promise Arizona, just right before Prop 104, I went to the ballot, we knocked on over 7,400 doors, and we collected 1,200 profiles from businesses and families. And so we've already have something to build on, and we've continued to do that. And so just waiting for the grant to come forward and get approved with the mayor and council has not stopped our efforts in the community, because all of us are community-based. Now, if you want specific questions about how we're going to address it, I think we're going to go back to them and ask them that question. Because what our work is, is to bring back a plan. We're supposed to come back with a unified community vision, but most importantly, attach to their voices. So we're very confident that, and that this, this work will just build on what we've been doing and build on the strengths of the neighborhood.
Well, thank you. I just, because it's such a large contract, and to me, South Central is, is, Light Rail is going to change South Central. How that's going to look like, I don't know. How it affects the neighborhoods and the mom-and-pops, I don't know. Those are the unknowns, but we know that we have to do our work at the very beginning.
Absolutely.
And to make sure that security and safety is one of the keys of that line.
Well, and actually, that came up in our conversations, is number one, the economic situation of their families in short-term and long-term education and their, and the health and well-being of the community. But lighting was a big issue. Dogs barking was a big issue. So it's, we're going to have to go back and go down to the weeds, as I would say, and really develop a great plan to bring back to you.
Well, thank you. You answered my questions.
Any other questions?
On the, excuse me, not a question, but just a comment. And lots of thank yous to the people who are around the table, and I'll start with you, Petra. What I heard you say is, is the work in the community started way before Prop 104 or the South Central, South Central Light Rail Extension, or even the conversation. The work, the work.
Well, and for me, it's been 30 years of conversation.
Right. And for those of us who are fortunate to know you, we know that, and we feel the impacts because of it. So thank you. And in fact, you've mentored a lot of people. We happen to have State Representative Tony Navarrete, who is here, who, who, you know, when I first met the representative, he was with you and your organization. And so there are a lot of great leaders throughout our community that, that know what it's like to grow up in, in South Phoenix. I cherish my, my time living in South Phoenix. This is really important. As far as I'm concerned, this is where the Light Rail should have started. You know, the reason I'm supportive of Light Rail and in particular, you know, this, this type of infrastructure is the economic development piece of it. There is a return on investment on Light Rail. So it's more than just transportation. It's, it's what you see on either side of that track when you see more, you know, more jobs coming to these neighborhoods and so on. And we've had that conversation many times, but when you see light, when I see Light Rail and I ask people to see it as an economic development tool with the return on investment nationally of four to one, but it's seven to one here in the Phoenix Valley. And then it's new infrastructure that gets laid in. I'll tell you that 19th Avenue Extension, Northwest Light Rail Extension, that when construction crews were going in to lay the utilities and, you know, the aging infrastructure that would have just been, you know, just ignored because we don't see it, right? So, so now that neighborhood, that community was able to get the new infrastructure under that track as well. And then, yes, of course, it's also transportation. So anyway, when it's that valuable a tool, it should have started in South Phoenix. It is what it is.
We have the highest bus ridership in the city, and yes, it's long overdue.
So the ridership is there, right?
Ridership is there.
And so Albert Santana taught me this, you know, when I first got here, it was, the first thing you have to look at to justify a line is the ridership. Well, I mean, you just said it, so it's been justified. So it is what it is. We're here now, and now it has to be done correctly, right? It has to be done as a community. And, you know, our, our city staff knows that. We, I feel confident that the team at the table, you know, they're also raising their families in this city.
And grandchildren.
And grandchildren, right? So, so the team, some of the groups that you're pulling together, Local First, Hustle Phoenix, Friendly House, you know, these, these groups have been here again, you know, before this, this discussion. Hustle Phoenix is fairly new. It's a few years old now, but Oye Waddell is someone that we want in this community for a very, very long time. He's all about the, you know, Phoenix, and of course, the, the history of Local First and Fuerza Local, they're also part of the fabric of our city. So anyway, this is, it looks like it's a, it's a good team. It's exciting, I think.
Yes, we're very excited.
You know, we want to, we want to be sure this continues, bringing everyone to the table, and, and I think this is how we do it, so I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Shall I move a motion?
You may.
Okay. I move that staff recommendation, I like, went off. Staff recommendation of the South Central Transit Oriented Development Business Assistant and Land Use Planning move forward.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Takes us to item nine.
Miss Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, item nine is an update to the Street Planning and Design Manual, and the request today is for an award of a contract on this one as well, to update a manual that hasn't been updated in almost 10 years. And so here today to talk about that is Maria Hyatt, Street Transportation Director, and Chris Kowalski, Special Projects Administrator from the Street Department. I'll turn it over to Maria.
Good morning, Madam Chair and subcommittee members. This morning, we were presenting the Street Planning and Design Manual, the contract award to update this manual. In simple terms, this is a how-to manual. So I usually want to try and break it down to what it really is. So it's a how-to manual for city staff, consultants, and developers who are doing work in our city streets. The manual incorporates policies and guidelines and design of the streets that reflect current city practices. So it takes other plans we have and other guidelines we have and puts them together. This is something that we've heard very clearly from the Vice Mayor on making sure that we are, any new thing we add incorporates the pieces of the other manuals, guidelines we have. So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to start off with this item first before we go to the next item, which is the complete street, so that we could differentiate for you all, as well as for me, as I continue to learn through this process. So this comprehensive manual will update and revise our existing practice, or our existing manual. And as Maria mentioned, it's been since 2009 since this, this manual was updated. And the end, our goal is to have it improve safety for all street users, including drivers, bicyclists, pedestrians, and transit users with our end product. And so Chris Kowalski will walk you through the process.
Good morning, Madam, sorry. Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. Just real briefly to follow up on what Maria was talking about a little bit, to give a little bit more background and context of how these all blend together, especially with the contract that's being asked for today. Back in March, we came to you for the Street Key Quarters Master Plan. And so really, it's a layering effect within that Key Corridor Master Plan, where we're looking at doing the transportation plan update, which is currently underway. We're looking at doing the Southwest Phoenix Transportation Update with assistance with MEG, as well as previous efforts that have been done. So you have Reinvent Phoenix, Plan Phoenix, you have the Bicycle Master Plan, the Five-Year Bike Program. And so you layer all that information, and then what you do is add the transportation element to it too, right? The ADTs, any of the bicycle data and so forth that we have, ridership data. And we come and we identify then those corridors, right? We identify that street typology that goes within those corridors. And so just a little bit of background there, what we do today then is bring forward that Planning and Design Manual, which like Maria talked about, really then gives guidance and direction on how to construct or how to show those, those elements of either complete streets or just general transportation elements to our community. And so it's really a guide not only for the development community, our engineers, but also for city staff. So a little bit of background why this is needed, we touched on it just a little bit. The last time, like I said, this is basically utilized by staff every day. It's an everyday manual. We're hoping it's something that they will be sitting on their desk right there for them to utilize and understand. We talked about a little bit the need for the project, being the last time that this was actually done was in 2009. So we know there's been a lot of advancements in technology, there's a lot of advancement in materials, construction materials. And so we need to make sure that we're giving guidance to our citizens, as well as our developers, on how that should be applied within our streets. So some of the context examples, we talked about bringing in recently adopted codes and guidelines. So we have Reinvent Phoenix, Plan Phoenix. Bring that in to show how some of those elements have then are constructed and implemented within our street network. We really want a guideline that's clearly concise and user-friendly, so a lot of pictures. We want to have that thousand, a picture's worth of 1,000 words type mentality. A diverse audience can look at it, they understand what we're trying to achieve, and so we'll do it through an easy, understandable manual. We're looking at giving guidance on daily design decisions, so there's not a lot of need to call around to various departments. It's there in front of you, you can understand it and be able to provide that, those resources back to our community members, as well as incorporate bicycle and pedestrian safety. And so here's an example of, of just designs or ways visually, we can, we can illustrate that so that people are clear on what we're trying to achieve.
And I'm just add that, in addition, really, this, this will end up being something like what Planning Development use for the planning code. So it's something that would be established, it would be, we're recommending bringing it back to you all for your final approval on it. But it is something that is very much a usable manual that can then be modified as needed as new things come in with council approval.
So we do have an outreach element to this. We do have a technical advisory committee, well, made up of external and internal stakeholders to be able to vet any type of details and so forth with them for consensus. We're looking to have this manual be able to be updated within 18 months. And so the recommendation today before you is to request the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee to recommend city council approval, to enter into an agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates at a cost not to exceed $350,000. And then staff will return to this subcommittee with periodic updates, as well as approval at project completion. So with that.
Okay, let me ask. You're going to include Reimagine Phoenix, the Bike Plan, the Tree Plan, the Light Rail Plan, the Rapid Transit Plan, the Shade Plan, Complete Streets, MEG's Plan, and also take into consideration the Planning Department. Each village has come up with a concept and plan for development. And they have specific items in there, how they want it to happen, and make sure that this is applicable throughout the city, because some of these doesn't work in all areas. And I just, I mean, all of these were developed independently, and I just want to make sure that we come up with a plan that is truly workable, that staff can implement, developers understand, and that we have something that's safe, considerate, but also adaptable to the villages.
Madam Chair, it's one of the reasons why this will take 12 to 18 months, is to be able to pull in those pieces. But Chris, why don't you walk them through how the team will look at the different elements?
So, sure. So Madam Chair, just, I have here in front of me the actual scope of work with Kimley Horn. And just so you, so we were clear on what it reflects, the project goals are to include policies, including complete streets, Bike Master Plan, Plan Phoenix, Walkport Urban Code, Downtown Code, Tree Shade Master Plan, Downtown Phoenix Comprehensive Plan. So all the ones you were just referencing, we made sure that they are clear, that they will be included in the, in the guide or the manual. The one thing is, is one of the areas too, is you're right, there is some overlap, and there are areas that could potential conflict. And so that's one of the areas that we identified for the consultant to map out those areas of potential conflict, work with the internal and external stakeholder groups, and then find a common resolution for those areas.
And you will take us through the CTC.
Correct. And then we would also take it back to TNI too, so that you, as part of those periodic updates, will allow us to bring up any of those conflict areas and be able to talk it through both from CTC, as well as through the TNI Subcommittee before final approval.
Because I'd like to see, oh, different members from all these committees, and I'm sorry, forgot that one. Walkport Urban Code. Participate, but I also think it's very important that we have businesses involved along the routes that we're talking about. It's got to work for everybody. And I think we have to recognize that we're never going to get rid of all the cars. Will not happen. But people, whether they live on New River Road or Central or Broadway, they still consider Phoenix their city. And they want to be able to, be able to go anywhere they want via any transportation mode they want. And I just think it's time we consolidate all of these so we have a very clear direction and we don't waste taxpayers' money.
I admire, we are in complete agreement on that. It needs to include all of the aspects from the pedestrian, the bicyclist, the driver, the transit user. All of the people who use our streets will be incorporated into this document.
Councilwoman.
So just a few questions. Are you going to depart from the way we look at streets? For example, our local streets are 50 feet wide. Is there, perhaps you're going to look to see if we can narrow them so people will slow down when they drive? Are we going to look at the lanes from 12 feet to 10, maybe? Again, you Again, you know, reading the complete streets, a lot of it is trying to slow down the speeders and make it more pedestrian-friendly. Are you really going to look at that? Because I know we have inherent conflicts because of our fire trucks and our garbage trucks. You're going to look at modern technology and how it might, look at the actual width of the lanes and the amount of asphalt we use?
So, Councilwoman Stark, great question. So, we know that we are pretty much limited and defined within the right-of-way, within our street classification map. The question is, are there elements of complete streets that could be added to our transportation network? That could be sidewalks. We have a lot of areas within the city of Phoenix that are deficient in sidewalks. That could be a hot crossing, that could be an area mid-block crossing point, that could be pedestrian lighting. So, those are just various elements. In relation to your question, could a road potentially be repurposed to add a bicycle lane or so forth? Well, that is an option. We would definitely have to take a look at that, do a lot of community outreach, look at daily traffic volumes and so forth, and to see if that's something that would make sense. But those are just various elements. Complete streets itself isn't going in and taking an entire street and doing the whole thing at one time. It's adding elements that might be missing, or elements that the community is wanting, and making sure and they're getting those.
And in many ways, it goes back to that Key Corridor Master Plan, which is why when we had the two circles, there's the arrow between the two, because they do connect back and forth. What the Key Corridor Master Plan will do is help us who identify what the typology of a street should be. Then, the Street Planning and Design Manual will help us, and help anybody who's working in that street, then develop those pieces into that street.
I just want to let us look at the departure from our typical streets. I, full disclosure, I live on a private street, and it's very narrow. It has sidewalks, there isn't a bike lane, but guess what? People ride their bikes, because it's very, people move very, very slow on it. I mean, it's, the lanes are very narrow, and the garbage trucks still get through, and fire truck has been on the street. But, I mean, I think, you know, we need to look at a new way of design, and see if there's a way that we can, especially for the neighborhoods. I mean, I know we need the major roads to move traffic, but maybe to look at our neighborhoods and look at the way we design the streets to make them safer. I drive through a lot of neighborhoods, have a little, you know, slow down, children at play, and it just, and a lot of it is, when you have a fifty-foot wide street, people are going to speed. So, I hope we look at a new type of design, kind of think out of the box. I mean, will that be a part of this, I hope?
For sure. Councilwoman Stark, we will be looking at different cross-sections. So, as you are aware, we've had the Street Classification Map, which is from the nineteen-eighties. We've had the same one forever. What we're looking to as part of this evaluation is look at, okay, is there a cross-section A, which is your typical arterial street, large regional arterial street? But is there things within that regional street that could be an A1, an A2, an A3? Maybe in those areas, maybe we don't have a twenty-four-foot median island in the middle of the center of a street, maybe it's a twelve-foot or sixteen-foot median island, which then allows us to put maybe other elements on the outside, maybe a landscape tract, more of shade trees, things of that nature. Maybe on other streets, like a collector, maybe that allows us to put on-street parking, which then would be a lot, a benefit to businesses, as well as communities next to it, if it's maybe commercially based or multifamily, and allows it also to slow down that traffic on a collector's street. So, there's a lot of different things that we're looking to implement with different cross-sections to kind of, to kind of achieve that goal of slowing down and designing our streets a lot more safely.
And also allows us to incorporate the bike elements with the protected bike lanes, et cetera. I'm looking at all of the different ways to make sure that that is as safe as possible for our bicyclists also.
I have, go ahead, Stark, and then I'll. Just, so, looking at this manual, I think maybe some of these studies we've done are premature. Do we need to review them and see how we can apply them? I mean, who's leading the charge here? The studies, or the?
So, Councilwoman Stark, that is a great question, because it kind of goes back to the key corridors. So, that consultant then will take and mine that data from area-specific plans, character-specific plans, and so forth. All that research that's been done with the community, those community meetings, that community input, bring all that together, and then add the transportation element to it, and then figure out, like I said, those key corridors and what it, what makes sense and where.
Okay, so, in getting a grasp on this, and understanding that we, that this consultant will be grabbing all these information studies, plans, everything else, and trying to do, analyze it from, I think, from the up-down, in the sense of mapping and overlaying. I look at it in a visual sense of, okay, here's this plan, here's this other plan, what is the commonality, and then what are the outliers, and then how do we then move, move kind of, I guess, not necessarily toward the middle, but how do we then look at safety elements? How do we look at pedestrian pieces? How do we then look at shade? Because to me, the shade plan somewhere needs to be in this whole process. In all this dynamic, my question is, you said, you made a statement saying, well, internal and external will then look at it. Who do you consider internal, and who do you consider external? Because in an environment like ours, the department could be the internal, and then the council could be the external. So, I want clarity on who the internal and external is. In addition to that, how does this go back out to the communities where then we find some conflict? We find some commonalities and show the commonalities, but where we find the conflict of the area and be able then to have a very rich dialogue and discussion, not, here's what we think the solution is, and here's where you can look at four different plans, and you pick which one you think is the best, and then that's the one we're going to really move forward, where I would like to see dialogue within the communities of really what the fear is, and why we need to move forward, or what is their logic in not moving forward? So, I think that's going to take more than eighteen months, that's just me. I think that's going to cost a little bit more, but I want to know, I want to know how we're going to address that from the very beginning.
So, as part of this document, one of the work efforts is to form that technical advisory committee. We have no perceived notions right now of who those people will be, that's going to be one of the greater discussion points. Should that be business leaders, should that be police, fire, internal staff from our operations group? Should that be members from our Complete Streets Advisory Board? Should that be people from our Valley Partnership, our development community, that come together and be able to, be able to have good dialogue and understanding? So, that will be part of this assessment, is to bring as many people as possible together to be able to have that discussion.
And Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, to add a little bit more to that, we need to work closely with each one of the council offices to get your input on who you think should be, you know, included. Also, if we're in specific areas, it's going to be much more specific to that area versus the broad citywide view. And Councilwoman Pastor, I think, I think what I'm hearing from you too, is that we need to go in with that full discussion versus coming in with recommendations. It needs to start with that, what do you think? Like you said, what are your fears? What would you like to see? What's your vision of this? And then incorporate that back into the document, and the updates back to council.
I will tell you, my fear is we're creating another committee who independently is going to try to combine all this. And I want to be very cognizant that these committees have done a great job, they have just worked independently of each other, and the coordination has not been there. I think it's very important that, we probably need to gain input from police, fire, economic development, I mean, internally, but I don't want that to be the plan. I guess, I'm not sure I'm expressing this right, but you have to have some type of foundation, and it's based on what's already in these plans, but I think we have to be super sensitive as we go forward. I live in a neighborhood that doesn't have sidewalks, we don't want them. We don't have a lot of street lighting, intentionally, and I know other areas in my district that are that way. They want the rural concept. And I want to make sure that we, developers going in and creating that type of environment, that we're not forcing them to have something that the neighborhood really doesn't want. But on the other hand, I want to make darn sure that as we develop this, that we look beyond our boundaries. We have Bell Road, Happy Valley has become, in my district, the original road. Peoria is growing leaps and bounds every day, and all that traffic is going across Happy Valley Road to get to I-17. That needs to be designated a regional road, and that takes a different type of consideration. But you also have to let the neighborhood know, because when they went out there and built those homes, they thought they were out, way out there, and that wouldn't happen. No one anticipated what how our neighbors are growing. Look at Goodyear, it's growing. Mill Gate's about eighty thousand acres out there, and it's going to be developed on Buckeye. So, I think you have to understand, we don't have very much east-west freeway, and there are certain streets that are going to carry huge capacity, and they're going to speed. So, they need to be built to compensate, to move traffic. That doesn't mean every one of them needs to be, and we need to work with ADAC, so that the overpasses over I-17, I mean, this is very complex, but I think it's very timely. I mean, we're a small city that grew quickly into a very large city, and we're playing catch-up. And to me, it's just time, timeout, get it right, and take us into the future so we can grow. That everybody wants to continue to live here, it's safer, but we can still move traffic and have businesses attracted to moving in here, so I guess that's my two cents worth.
I have a question. How do you, how will they incorporate the pedestrian fatalities? How does those reports come into play when we're looking at streets or bicyclist fatalities? How does all those other elements come into play in this whole design? Because it's going to be a big task. In that, that's one, that's one of my questions, so, because District Four has the largest, so that's one of my concerns. The second piece is regarding the advisory committee. I have the same sentiments regarding the advisory committee. I feel like once we see the plans, see what, all the different elements that come into play, I think it's our responsibility, not necessarily to the advisory committee, but to go out to the neighborhoods and say, this square mile, or however we do it, go out to the neighborhoods and say, this is the elements that happen within your streets, within your neighborhood. Here are the positives, here are the negatives. What would you like to do to move, move forward? And I look at it as a grid. You know, our streets are a grid, to look at it like that, and then say, okay, now, once we get some input, how does this flow, and how, where's the connectivity of all of it? Because I think we've done enough studies or enough plans, and we've asked citizens, to me, time is very precious, time is money, time is economics. And we have asked a lot of experts to come build these plans. They're into play now. It's just they're very siloed, but now it's how do we fuse it all together, and then show to a community possibly what the master plan is. It helps developers, it helps neighborhoods, it helps mom-and-pop stores to know what to look for, what the traffic pattern is, or what the ins and outs, or how it's going to change, because it's all our economics coming into play. Helps school districts to move the flow of the traffic. So, it's a whole community piece that needs to really come into play to be able to say, okay, this, here's our dynamics in the morning. Here are our dynamics here, here's where we know where we, where the traffic can move at what, you know, certain times or whatever. So, that's just my question and thoughts.
Madam Chair, if I may respond on the, particularly on the first part of the question, I really appreciate the question about the pedestrian fatalities. It's really a critical issue for the City of Phoenix, and it's a very important issue. The city manager has asked me to lead a coordination effort that really involves our Street Transportation Department and our Police Department, looking at, you know, evaluating all the data that we're receiving about what's going on with each of these fatalities. So, we're, we literally have a review team that is going through, looking at each of the fatality and the cases and the specifics of those cases, to not only identify what might have been needed at that site, but also what other trends we might see going on that can help guide us. We're looking at aspects of the street engineering, absolutely, things like the lighting, things like hot crossings. Would a hot crossing have been appropriate here and maybe been very helpful? Those are just a couple of examples of the work that we're doing. But we're also looking on the police side at enforcement, and targeting enforcement of speeders, helping also for pedestrians who may be putting themselves in an unsafe spot, and helping educate and bring awareness.
Me get a ticket for jaywalking?
Well, not necessarily a ticket, but at least bringing it, bringing it to their attention and saying, this is, this is not safe for you to cross, you know, without a crosswalk, and that kind of thing. And so, those are the things that we're working on and putting some recommendations together. And we plan to bring more to the city council for further discussion on this. This is a hugely important issue, and will absolutely be tied into this effort as well, since this directly relates to street design, and we want to make sure all those elements of adding, enhancing safety are incorporated into that, into that manual. And then, on the, on the second point.
Mario?
Oh, yes.
You're not going to wait for that, though. You're proceeding right now on the safety aspect.
On the safety aspect, absolutely. That's underway, and you will actually see in the coming months, some further discussion and recommendations from staff about what things to do moving forward, because that's such a critical and immediate issue.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. And then, as it relates to the, to the community, you're right on point, and we really appreciate your question and your direction on making sure that as we, as we talk about specific projects and specific areas, we have to go talk to that community about the impacts, and making sure that we're doing so with a clean slate, and not, not making people feel like we're trying to lead them down, excuse the pun, lead them down a certain road, but letting, letting their input really guide that discussion, and just, and being that, having that be our starting point, making sure that we're reaching out to the, to the, enough of the community that's impacted. And so, you know, when it comes to our streets, it's not just the immediate neighborhood, and we've heard from Councilwoman Pastor about this quite a bit, you know, on Fifteenth Avenue and Osborne and that area, and how, you know, folks are, folks from other areas of the city use those roads to get through. So, we got to make sure we capture their input as well, and it's critical that we do that. And I'll, I'll see if Maria has anything else to add about that.
Ruth, we do have two parts.
Okay. I just wanted to summarize that, at the end of the day, this is a how-to manual. I mean, it really is going to incorporate the different designs and design elements that could be used in the streets. It doesn't specifically say, this is what you have to use for this. And, you know, when I, I think I confused you, Councilwoman Pastor, because I probably confused myself during that. When we're talking about issues that come up reflecting neighborhoods or things like that, this design manual will not drive that, but it will help us foster those conversations with the community that need to be, continue to be ongoing. This is not the answer for all of that, but it incorporates how you could build what our community wants and needs related to safety, pedestrian, bicycling, cars, all of those different elements.
I have one more question, because I know that we're, it sounds like we're going to rely on this how-to manual. What happens to items that are in the middle of the process right now?
So, those items will, they're currently, for instance, we have several that are currently in design, and so, you know, there will be a decision on whether to continue those. At the end of the day, those, those design elements that are continued there are part, these are ongoing discussions with the community, the stakeholders, the businesses, and that needs to be a decision based on. needs to be a decision based on city council, on whether we move out of design, finish design, and move on to construction, or whether we hold off after design is complete until this is completed. That will be something that we could have, get subcommittee and council approval on.
So you'll bring those items then to us? You'll do an analysis, or how is?
Ultimately, before those go to construction, they would need your analysis on it.
Okay. Thank you.
But this doesn't mean that you're going to slow down repaving some of the streets, fixing the potholes or all the other things that.
Madam Chair, unless, unless you tell us differently, we are going and blowing on all of those.
Go. We do have two cards. Olaf Dorn.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to come up and speak, please?
Madam Chair, Honorable Representative Concerned Citizens. My name's Olaf Dorn, I'm 57, lifelong resident of Phoenix, been around the world twice before I was come back home. I'm concerned about some of the things happening in my hometown. The bus system's functioning pretty well, haven't been stranded, except maybe three times in the last two or three months or so. But this is of grave concern as the summer heat is piling on, unprecedented heat. I can remember just trying to get to church on a Sunday morning, being stuck for two and a half hours, and five buses didn't show. And I had water with me, but I ran out, and, and being disabled, didn't have any backup plan or a way to get out of there. No shade, no bus shelter, no shade provided. So for disabled people especially, and frail elderly, this is of grave concern, because the subcontract operator doesn't necessarily maintain the vehicles. And, for example, one route at the same time, the bus had no left headlight, which a private citizen would be cited for. And, and I, and I reported it to the driver, and I think I called and left a message, because the transit. But the next week, at the same time, same route, this headlight had not been repaired. And you've got approximately 20-ton vehicles, plus or minus five pounds at first guess, moving around with bad brakes. That's quite a, that's quite a horse and buggy that's hard to stop with a crude momentum.
We appreciate you coming.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But I've listened to everyone here, and it's very valuable dialogue. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, I, about slowing down and narrowing of the streets, what I've seen done on very wide streets in, in neighborhoods that say, slow children at play, is they just put in speed Does anyone have any questions of me?
No, I don't think so, but thank you for being here and.
Oh, it's a privilege to address the body. Honorable Representative, thank you, and warmest regards to Mayor Stanton.
Thank you.
Ladies?
Next speaker, I think is Bradley Pollan. Sorry.
Good morning. Bradley Pollan. I was having a little difficulty getting some information from staff and understanding. It seems as though this would be several policies put into one single policy, and I'm trying to understand, how would that affect private property? Meaning particularly if the private property is vacant land and not yet developed. Who would pay for this additional infrastructure? I know we're talking about the roadway, the right-of-way, but does it affect curb cuts? Does it affect street lighting? Who pays for the street lighting? The trees and so on? I know that there have been numerous subcommittees that are open to the public, but you have to look for those, those meetings. And I'm not sure that the property owners and necessarily the neighborhood groups are aware of what's going on. I'm not sure that there's quite enough dialogue. And if I may make a suggestion that maybe this could be broken down, at least to the village planning committees, that maybe there are some task forces within each village, and, and look at each neighborhood and each area separately, even though there may be similarities in transportation needs and wants. But I, I, I think the city might be making a, a mistake trying to look at something globally. As a past policy, our major streets were designed so that leaving downtown, there were three lanes. And, and so if you look at Seventh Avenue, as you go north of Camelback, and this Seventh Avenue would essentially dead-end at the mountain, you have three lanes and suddenly it stops. And I'm not sure that is a wide, wise policy and, and design principle, that it needs to transition from one neighborhood or one area to another. And I'm just asking for some more input from, from private property owners and neighborhoods. Thank you.
I think the points you raised are very valid. Further north you go, the less grid system there is. I'm not sure, and I know Alwetuki, I think, also has the same challenge. And we have always followed that pattern, which is no longer really applicable in many areas. So I think using villages is our recommendation, too. So that's all the cards we have. Do we want a motion?
Shall move the recommendation, let's see, of Kim Lee Horn and Associates at no cost to exceed $350,000.
Have a second?
I'll second. I, I hope you can do it at that cost.
I know, I don't, I'm sure they'll be back.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Just a, a quick comment. Yeah, I have a couple of names I'd like to provide for you. You know, I thank you for reminding all of the council members that you, you want the council to make sure certain people are at the table or, or part of the discussion. The goal is to, not, not just to move people, but to build a vibrant, safe community. And, and that's the overall goal, a vibrant, safe community. So, so that said, I, I'm supportive.
All in favor, please say aye. Pose. Motion carries unanimously. You've got a big challenge. Next item is Complete Streets Design Guidelines.
Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee, the Complete Streets Advisory Board was established by the city council in 2014. Their charge is to develop a Complete Streets Design Guidelines manual, establish performance measures to assess the city's progress in meeting the guidelines, make recommendations to other city boards for revisions to codes related to Complete Streets, and make recommendations to the city council on all matters concerning Complete Streets. This board has worked hard since their formation in 2014, and I'd like to recognize C.J. Hager, who's the vice chair of the Complete Streets Advisory Board. She and her group have had a, a large task behind them on getting ready for presenting this to city council. So in your, in your packet, we provided you a copy of the Complete Streets Advisory Board's recommended design guidelines, as well as staff's proposed modifications to the guidelines. And Chris Kowalski will walk you through the process. He also chairs the Complete Streets Advisory Board on behalf of the department.
Thank you, Maria. Madam Chair, subcommittee members, the Complete Streets are really designed on six principles, elements for successful Complete Streets. One of those being designed for safety, and we want to make sure that it's not just for motorists, but for all users, if that's bicyclists, pedestrians, transit users, and so forth. We want to make sure that it's comfort and convenient, so we make sure that the thermal comfort is considered, that there's accessibility and ADA that gets all users to where they need to be. We want to make sure that it's designed for context. This is important, making sure that the surrounding land use is appropriate to the element that's being applied, making sure that the street classification map or the street that's being considered for that element is, is also involved. We want to make sure it's designed for sustainability, make sure it has good engineering practice, good engineering judgment behind the design itself. We also want to make sure it's cost-effective, so we know that as a city, we're going to be maintaining these elements. And so we want to know what the life cycle costs are of those. We want to know the makeup of those in terms of how we should have maintained them appropriately. And then we also want to make sure we design for connectivity for all users. So definitely making sure that we have connection to light rail lines, bus rapid transit lines, transit lines, public places, schools, libraries, parks, and things of that nature. So to date, the guidelines have went, at March 15th, it went to the Development Advisory Board, which referred that to a Development Advisory Board Technical Subcommittee. It was heard of that technical subcommittee on April 12th, and it was recommended for approval. It then went forward to the Citizen Transportation Commission on April 26th, where it was recommended to be continued for four months, with the recommendation that this subcommittee, as well as council, also continue it for four months. On May 3rd, which was last week, it went to Planning Commission, where they recommended that it be only for publicly funded projects, and only in the areas of Reinvent Phoenix and the Downtown Code. And so the guidelines, future, future guidelines will be presented at the May 17th Development Advisory Board, back from the subcommittee recommendation back to them, as well as the August 23rd Citizen Transportation Commission, which would then follow up after the four months continuance to come back to them. So.
Going back to the committee actions, the Development Advisory Board, it was referred to a technical committee. Was that, what was the reason?
So they wanted additional consideration to talk about in detail about NACTO design guidelines, what those entailed in the, in the, in the design. And so that was discussed, and then that was recommended for approval back to Dev, which we'll look at May 17th.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're looking for today is staff request direction for the possible action on a recommendation to city council for the Complete Streets guidelines.
Okay. We have many speakers here. Let's call them up first, if you, is that okay? Jackson Mall. There he is.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the subcommittee. My name is Jackson Mall. I am a registered lobbyist with the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona, and I'm here today in opposition to the adoption of the design manual. On my way down here, I was trying to think when the last time I addressed the council to oppose something at the City of Phoenix, and I had a difficult time doing that. And the reason for that is because the city has historically had an extraordinarily robust public outreach process and stakeholder input process. To give you an example, the city's in the process right now of adopting its building codes. As a part of that process, the city has a six-step public process. In addition to that, all of the amendments, all of the significant changes are all posted on the city's website for everyone to review and provide comment on. And in fact, the city itself has called the association to have a specific meeting with our members, to go through each and every one of those proposed amendments, to get specifically our input on all of those items. Unfortunately, on this issue, that same level of public outreach has not occurred. Where this lack of outreach manifests itself is on the slide you just saw, which is when this was presented to the various boards and commissions and the actions that they took, in particular, the Citizens Transportation Committee. My understanding is that their position was that the city should take an additional four months to consider whether or not, these are the types of improvements that are to be funded with the city's transportation dollars. Our position is that before the city contemplates imposing those same costs on private developers, that it should make a determination as to whether it is itself willing to fund those. All of this being said, I want to thank this subcommittee for the discussion that you had on the previous agenda item. In particular, Madam Chair, your vision and direction for how you think this ought to be done, we think is a much preferable approach to kind of this ad hoc, one-off way that we've been doing things in the past. So with that, we do stand opposed at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Maybe this is more for staff. Did we do a cost analysis for the Citizens Transportation Committee when you presented there, or?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Stark, that's actually one of the things that the commission requested, was a cost analysis, and, and that's part of the reason they continued the item so that we could have some time to, to work on that and bring that back to them.
Thank you very much for coming down and speaking and participating. Bradley Pollan?
Good morning. My comments are similar to my, the last agenda item is, is again, how does this affect private property owners? How much are they paying for these added policy changes and the outreach that was given? And so I would respectfully request that this maybe be slowed down, continued, and, and take it out to the public. Again, I understand that there have been meetings and subcommittee meetings, and they've been posted online, and, but you have to look for it, and I'm not sure that's appropriate for this type of policy. The city, on other items, goes out to the public and seeks their input. I ask you to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Woody Brown? Woody, I saw you here a little bit ago.
Put in a ghost card, huh? I'm like the gentleman before, I think we need to kind of slow this down. There are several things that are happening here that are proposed changes that will impact the downtown. I represent the Suns and the Diamondbacks, and some of the impacts that would happen in the downtown corridor would affect those facilities a great deal and impact the traffic in downtown Phoenix. So I'm in the same state they are, in that we need to kind of take our time, take a good look at this, and make sure that we are included in that impact, so that we can give our input as to what may or may not happen. So change is coming whether we want it or not, but let's do it in a manner in which benefits everybody.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maria Byer. I represent the Phoenix Suns, Phoenix Mercury, Talking Stick Resort Arena, and Legends Entertainment District. And so I'm here to say that I agree with the previous speakers on this matter, that I think it does need more research done. These are major changes, and we already have quite a significant traffic issue in downtown Phoenix. Meanwhile, we have, and especially on event nights. And there's a lot changing. I mean, we just had a big announcement from the Diamondbacks. The outcome of that is completely unknown at this point. We have the Fry's Center going up. You know, we know what has happened to downtown just with those construction, the construction and the road, the lanes that have been taken out, and I mean, it's a lot of chaos. I mean, Maria and Vice Mayor Williams were nice enough to come out and see, and others were nice enough to take a ride with Woody, who directs traffic, like you said, parking for the Diamondbacks and the Suns. And you can see when you're really on the ground, you know, the, the visions are great, but when you're on the ground and you're watching cars that are parked, literally parked on the light rail track, you know, because they think they can, you know, race across because the traffic's so bad and they're in such a hurry to get where they're going. You know, you see that the stuff that happens on the ground with streets is really chaotic and, I think, dangerous, and probably doesn't lead to people wanting to be downtown. And we're building this downtown so people want to be there. But we really need to, I think, slow it down. One of the constituencies that I don't think was really experienced much outreach, at least from our experience, has been the people who are employed downtown. I mean, I think it'd be worth reaching out to the major employers, the people that actually, you know, buy tickets for events. I mean, these are the people that bring the commerce downtown, that kind of helps support this vision, the residents. I mean, right now, we have one kind of major residential development, the Summit, you know, back near the ballpark. I think if you talk to, time's up. Anyway, more outreach. I agree with the former speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie Eldon?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee. My name is Annie Eldon, and I have lived in Phoenix for a little over five years. I am here to support the passage of Complete Streets Design Guidelines. Three years ago, in 2015, I remember voting for Transportation 2050. There was much excitement and hope that Phoenix could start to become a safe and accessible city where people partake in all modes of transportation, cars, bikes, feet, wheelchairs, et cetera. Complete Street Design Guidelines came into existence before that, four years ago. Complete Street Design Guidelines came into existence before that, four years ago, and has been identified as, by the National Association of City Transportation Officials, also known as NACTA, and others, as a successful way to make cities safer and save lives. So it would be easy and natural to adopt these as part of the goals of Transportation 2050. Today, three years after the public voted this Plan 2050 into existence, we are still waiting for Complete Streets Design Guidelines to become a reality. In the meantime, more people have lost their lives because of poor street design. In 2016 alone, there were 200 deaths caused by traffic collisions in Phoenix proper, 81 of which were pedestrians. Just two weeks ago, at a Citizens Transportation Committee meeting, a Commissioner said that they have other priorities than saving lives. As the City Council has not passed Complete Streets Design Guidelines as of yet, four years, it appears that they too have other priorities than saving lives. This is incredibly worrisome. The public voted on Transportation 2050 because they believed it would make them safer. The public voted on City Council members into office because they believe that these members would do the best... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. CJ Hager?
Good morning. My name is CJ Eisenbarth-Hager, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Complete Streets Advisory Board, and also a resident of District 4. I'm gonna, I think there are three points that I really want to make today that I think are important to carry with you. First of all, the Complete Streets Advisory Board process was open, and everyone was welcome to be part of it. In fact, I think the city should be really proud of the inclusion of the Health Committee. I would say that we are second to none in the U.S. as far as including the health community in this discussion. And also, I want to note that we slowed the discussion process by about eight to nine months to intentionally include the development community in this process. That included getting direct feedback on some of the language from the development and community, which we changed, the policy based on the recommendations. We also looked at site plans and how the recommendations would affect those site plans. The second point that I think is important is that complete streets are not new. There are over 1,200 communities in North America that have a complete streets policy or guidelines, and we're just, we're one of the last ones. So, I think a lot of the questions and the angst have been dealt with by other communities, and I would suggest we look to some of our peers, like those in Los Angeles, San Antonio, or Denver. And then, lastly, just as the last speaker said, I think this takes on a new sense of urgency, especially with all of the pedestrian deaths in March. We're becoming known as a place that's unsafe to be a pedestrian. Just in March alone, 10 pedestrians died, as you all know. That doesn't include those who were seriously injured. It doesn't include cyclists who died. It doesn't include cyclists who were seriously injured. So, I think keeping those folks in mind is exceptionally important. Thank you.
Thank you. Alisa Lyons?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alisa Lyons. I represent Valley Partnership on behalf of the commercial development industry throughout the valley. I'm a registered lobbyist with the City of Phoenix. I want to bring you back to last summer, as that was the last opportunity I had to speak in front of you. At that point, the policy from the Complete Streets Advisory Board was being considered. You thankfully adopted that policy. During your adoption discussion, you specifically directed the Complete Streets Advisory Board to work with the development stakeholders moving forward, on any elements that would affect the development community. Unfortunately, that did not occur. These guidelines I received because I heard a rumor in December that they existed. I contacted the city to find out what had occurred, and the response I got from the Complete Streets Advisory Board was that the meetings where these happened were posted, and I should have known. We don't believe that that's the stakeholder process that you had intended. That's certainly not what we expected. One of the keys to this process, I think, needs to be the reminder that any documents like this will affect 500 square miles of the City of Phoenix. 90% of the streets within that 500 square miles are built by the private sector. They are paid for by the private sector. Because of that, we truly believe that the private sector has a role at the table, an authentic opportunity, or should have the authentic opportunity to speak into that process, and for that reason, we oppose adoption of these guidelines at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake Hinman?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, good morning. For the record, my name is Jake Hinman. I'm a registered lobbyist for the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. I stand before you today, we are opposed to the proposed Design Guidelines, and similar to previous testimony, we're opposed primarily for the fact that we just weren't brought to the table, and given a real chance to provide input on these Design Guidelines. As far as previous testimony was made about, you know, the ability for us to participate, I have to push back on the assertion. Simply monitoring agendas, and then showing up at a public hearing, being a member of the public, similar to what we're doing today, and expressing our position, is not the same as being invited to a meeting, and providing, and being able to provide meaningful input. It's just simply not the way the City of Phoenix has ever done things. In my 10 years of working in the City of Phoenix, I've never seen anything like this. Previous testimony mentioned the building code. I wholeheartedly agree. That's been an open, fair, transparent process. It's literally a document that's hundreds and hundreds of pages long, yet somehow, the City of Phoenix has found a way to open the process and include many, many vested stakeholders. Just last week, I received two notices from two separate city departments about asking my members for input on policy. Why has this issue taken a completely different path? I pose one scenario for you. Imagine there was a board made primarily of, or exclusively of, the development community. And that development community, say, rewrote the zoning ordinance. And you didn't have any input from neighborhoods, you didn't have any input from anybody outside the development community. That would be bad public policy. I'm the first one to admit, that would be bad public policy. The City of Phoenix has always been a city where more stakeholders, more input is important, not fewer. Madam Chair, members, I urge you to oppose these Design Guidelines. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly wouldn't want to chair that meeting. Jacqueline Chamberlain?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, and to all members of the Committee. My name is Jacqueline Chamberlain. I represent Pinnacle Prevention. We're a nonprofit that seeks to support and ensure healthy, thriving communities across Arizona, and opportunities for physical activity and food access are a big component of our work. I'm also a City of Phoenix resident. I come from District 2, up at Happy Valley, which I will talk about in a minute. I, we are here to strongly support the adoption of these guidelines. In addition to some of the things that have already been said, I think it's important to note that these guidelines are based on best practice, from national standards and examples, and they're also flexible, to take into account the individual needs of any community stakeholders, to make sure that it produces a community that's best for all members. And in my work, I see the impact of what not having complete streets can do, the isolation, the lack of access to resources, and a lot of those community members don't have a voice in stating how not having a resource like a street that connects them to each other, to the bus system, to food, how that may impact their health and well-being. In my own personal life, in the community I live in, it's undergoing quite a bit of development, and even though my subdivision is great, it follows the Complete Street Guidelines as it is, where it's safe, the second you walk outside of my subdivision, it's not a street that you would want to walk on, or be safe walking on, particularly going up to Happy Valley on 19th Avenue, that have already been fatality once already this year, and other accidents. I have two small children, that I would love to have the opportunity to ride their bikes to school, but they cannot, because they have to go around onto that main road, and that's just not something I feel safe putting them on. So, in summary, we really support and ask the Committee to consider the adopting these Guidelines, because there are a lot of community members who are impacted by not being able to get out of their homes. Thanks.
Thank you. Nicole Olmstead?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Committee. My name is Nicole Olmstead, and for the record, I'm the Senior Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association, and I am a registered lobbyist with the City of Phoenix. Our organization has been involved with the Complete Streets Advisory Board as a voluntary stakeholder for the past two years. I am not a member of the Complete Streets Advisory Board Committee, but I have been attending as many of the Committee meetings as I possibly can. I receive regular communication from the City of Phoenix staff. I receive appointment reminders on my calendar. I know exactly who I need to reach out to. The folks that have claimed that they have not been part of the meetings, they did attend in the beginning, and then they chose to walk away. A lot of the meetings where we've gone through all of the policies, especially the Complete Streets policy, we all were able to provide input, and in fact, a lot of our input was incorporated into the policy. I don't know anything about Design Guidelines, and I'm still at those meetings, as many of them as I can be at. These Guidelines are very flexible, and we strongly support the adoption of the Guidelines, and move them forward to the next step. We know that a healthy community incorporates transportation choices, active transportation choices for all of the community, and there are a lot of people who depend on buses and bikes as the way to get to work, food, and healthcare, and so this is something that needs to continue moving forward.
Thank you very much. We have two cards that are in favor, but not to speak. Jim McPherson, did you want to speak? There you are. I knew he couldn't pass up a chance.
My reputation. Jim McPherson, 914 West Osborne, here in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm Executive Director of the Sustainable Communities Collaborative, which is a group that advocates for quality urban design along light rail in Mesa, Phoenix, and Tempe. I know each of your emails. I have your emails. You have my emails. You probably received emails from me. We communicate, and I know the members of the Subcommittee, and I know the development community, and if we can't talk to each other, I know those opportunities have existed. So to say that there hasn't been communication, or there haven't been invited, I think is incorrect and false. Again, these are national guidelines, and for us to not to adhere to national guidelines or be supportive of national guidelines sends a message. What does that message say about our city, and the way we want to be perceived as in the future? We should not go backwards. We need to go forwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Quinn Tepes? Okay, in favor, but doesn't wish to speak. Thank everyone for, thank you for speaking. I will just say, from my perspective, I absolutely want this to be a great, healthy, safe city. It's just, I think we're in a little disagreement how quick that can happen. I'm just concerned that if we don't look at everything, including complete streets as part of this package, and have the Design Committee, CTC, review it, do a cost analysis, and incorporate it into what the consultant is doing, our previous item, I think we're doing a real disservice to all of our citizens in all areas of the city. So, I am not saying no, but I am just not willing to accept this today. Councilwoman? Thank you. Yes, I think complete streets can be a very valuable tool. I think it's important. I do think we need to do a cost analysis, though, and I will tell you, I think we'll come back and find that actually we could save money by doing complete streets. There are some cities that have been leaders in complete streets. Boston is one of them, and they're already going back in and reevaluating some of the principles of complete streets, and I think we could probably talk to some of these cities as well, to see their experience. I do want to see this happen, but I think we need to be very cautious as we move forward, and I think that cost analysis is really important, because I think, really, it'll probably win over the development community. I think, I'm pretty sure it will. I know there has been a lot of dialogue, and I want to really say thanks to the Complete Streets Advisory Board. They have done stellar work, and I know it's been a long haul, and I know you want to see it adopted, but I think if we could just continue it for some additional months to do the cost analysis, I think we can get there. I do think there's some good principles in here. I do want to see, though, for example, we talked about designed streets for slower speeds. I'd like to see what that looks like. Is, again, is that a smaller lane, or is it just redesigning what we have today to include bicycles? When we talk about streets, can we at least specify what might be a local versus a collector versus a major street? That really isn't specified in here, and I need a little bit more detail with regards to that. And I don't know, maybe I can ask CJ, did you guys talk about major versus local versus collector?
Versus regional.
Versus regional, thank you. I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yes, this is CJ Hager again. Yes, we did talk about that, but we thought that it was a bit premature to get that far into the details. We thought providing this sort of global overarching vision with some specifics was important, and also to provide flexibility. And I will add, while I'm here, that when we were talking with the development community, and they were at the table with us with the site plans, cost was definitely the major driver of the discussion. And so, we have talked about cost. The complexity is, is that these changes will change based on context. So it won't look the same in Happy Valley as it does in the City of Phoenix. So coming up with, it's going to cost X amount of dollars to make these changes, was difficult because the context is going to change. So, that's just something to think about as we're talking about the cost. I don't think we're going to have a sheet that has, this change is going to cost this much.
Thank you. Just, but I do think maybe we could do, thank you CJ, I think we could do some scenarios, maybe look at a local street, and maybe look at a major street, maybe look at downtown versus where you live, in the kind of the rural part of the city, with the one-acre lots and the horse properties. So I think maybe if we could just do a cost analysis, I think we can get there. I feel pretty comfortable with the design principles. I just need a little bit more information. So, I would make a motion, but maybe there's... No, I think you have to do it. Okay. I would like to move that we not take action today, and that we go back to our Citizens Transportation Committee and the Development Advisory Board to get some information from them, but during that time, if we could do the cost analysis, and then come back to... Was the Citizen Transportation Committee four months, did they continue it? So maybe we could come right after that, come back here, because you'll also meet with the Development Advisory Board. So, we're going to look at a four-month continuance, then? Okay. Do we have a second? It's a tough one.
Well, I'm thinking of the timing personally, and I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second it, but it really is about building a vibrant, safe community, and Phoenix, you know, I take pride in the fact that this is my hometown as well, so I believe we are leaders here. But part of, part of leading is, you know, realizing there are other parts of the country, and even the world, that may have a solution, so that we're not recreating the will, and I think there's some great examples out there, in how complete streets works. So, I think, you know, it needs to be something that is unique to Phoenix, because we are unique, because it works in other places, doesn't mean it works here, and vice versa, whatever. But, but I do think that this is part of the solution, and it is going to, it's going to take, bring... But I do think that this is part of the solution, and it is going to, it's going to take bringing everyone to the table, so, you know, it doesn't look like the, you know, there's not the support to actually get this done today, but I'm willing to support the continuance, but I do want to work with my colleagues and staff right away to try to get the right people to the table to get something done. I think there's a lot of frustration out there because it has been continued, and continued, and continued for so long. And I think we have to do it, or don't do it at some point, you know.
Councilwoman?
So, I kind of struggle with this, because I know the impact that it would have in District Four, specifically since I have a large food desert. I have a large population that uses transportation to get to and from work and to school, and bike even, and they use light rail. But there's an area of the district, which is the west side, I always say west of I-17, doesn't really get the attention that it deserves, and get the same attention that central Phoenix gets in the sense of connectivity, bike lanes, pedestrian friendly, there are food deserts, so health is an issue. And I understand how some of the dynamics in complete streets could get that started and start moving it into that direction. I also have great concern of the fact that we have a group that felt like they weren't heard, and feel like there are some other methods of coming to the center and being able to have that dialogue. And I really believe in dialogue and getting to the center and push back, push back, but we can get there. So, my commitment to this whole process is to work with the group to get to the center, is to work with Valley Forward, is to work with the home builders, is to work with the development community to understand the different impacts it has throughout the whole city, and not just one certain area. It's an impact throughout the whole city. We are collectively different. That's what makes the city beautiful, because we are diverse in many different ways, and how we adjust to this process is very important to me. So, I have that commitment. I will, in the sense, lead and follow at the same time with my colleagues to give us the time that we need to look at this in a deeper, in the weeds, I call it getting into the weeds now, of being able to then have a complete street guidelines that is needed for each district, and how it impacts each district. So, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So, thank you.
From my perspective, based on especially our last item on there, I hope that complete streets principles are reviewed as part of that, and fully incorporated when we get down that path, but I don't want it ignored in that process. I think it has a lot of value, it's had a lot of input, but I also know when staff gets something, it turns into concrete. It's just not ideas, or suggestions, or whatever. And there are areas I think that definitely need reviewed and expanded or reconsidered for certain areas of the city. I don't think there's any way one plan fits every single part of this city. It's so diverse. But don't forget it until it's formally adopted. I think it's very important, because we've spent a lot of time, there's a lot of people that's been involved. It just needs to have further review and input from the entire community. Having said that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Braces to 11, proposed dockless bicycle program.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Maria Hyatt will remain at the table, but also Brianna Velez from Street Transportation is here, and Landon Loveland from the Law Department to discuss a proposal for a dockless bicycle program. Maria?
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, today we're going to talk about a different form of bikes that we have. So, currently, the City of Phoenix has a contract with Grid Bikes, and those are what are called docked bikes. And so, docked means that they go, they start off at a bike rack, and they end the ride at a bike rack. And so, that's different than what we're talking about today, which is the dockless. What you're seeing in other cities throughout the country, as well as our neighboring cities, and actually quite a few are trickling over into our city, are the dockless bikes, which allows a rider to rent a bike at point A and return it to point B. You don't have to lock it to anything, you can leave it there. You end your ride by, I'm doing a self, like a lock that's actually on the bike to end your trip, so that you're not charged anymore as a rider. And so, bikes are secured, you know, via your phone app or by pushing a button. In fact, I used one this weekend in St. Louis, where I just pushed the button up, and it locked the bike, and it was, my trip was over. So, what we know is that the bikes are in our neighboring cities, they're in other cities throughout the country, and so, we know that eventually, they're going to end up in Phoenix. And we want to make sure that we are ahead of that, so that we can, one, protect our city, as well as our residents and private property owners, by establishing a program for this. So, what our proposed ordinance would do, it requires a permit, establishes rates and fees. This is a cost recovery system that we are looking at, that, to make sure that we're revenue neutral on this, and not out of pocket for what the city is doing, as well as establishing the parking regulations within the right-of-way. And Brianna Velez, our Deputy Street Transportation Director, and Landon Loveland will be here to also answer our questions about this project.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Maria. Madam Chair and Subcommittee Members, as Maria mentioned, a bike share permit will be required as part of this ordinance. And so, the permit will require bike share vendors to meet national safety standards, conduct regular maintenance and safety inspections, rebalance the bikes on a daily basis, implement a user education plan to ensure riders are aware of all the city requirements, and provide visible contact information with 24-hour accessibility. It will also include standard terms and conditions, such as insurance, indemnification, and performance bonds. So, the proposed rates and fees include an application fee, a permit fee, and a relocation fee. And so, I just want to reemphasize what Maria mentioned, that these proposed rates and fees are intended to cover the city costs, and we will continue to evaluate these during the first 12 months of the program. These fees are similar to what some of the other cities have put in place as it relates to their dockless bike share program. So, to better control the public right-of-way and reduce complaints, the following parking regulations are being proposed as part of the ordinance, and so, bikes would be required to remain upright and on a hard surface, maintain minimum of four feet travel space for pedestrians, unimpeded access to private properties and grid stations, as well as maintaining vehicular travel area. Absolutely.
Bikes upright on a hard surface. What does that mean?
So, a hard surface would be asphalt or concrete. That would not include decomposed granite, so in our landscaped areas and so forth.
Okay. I can think of a situation right now where there's a small little space on Thomas and 11th Avenue, and there is a bus stop, and the bike is upright and on hard surface. However, you cannot move on 11th Avenue and Thomas to be able to get to the crosswalk. So, that would, for me, be a check. Minimum pedestrian travel space on four feet. I could see them move it right, and I don't think a bike rider would know this, to how to put it, where to put it, right on the public and private drive. So, I guess I'm just, I'm thinking through scenarios at this moment that I've seen, so...
Yeah. So, and so, I want to touch base back on the user education plan. That will be placed on the bike share vendors, where as part of their app, when they pull that up, all of that information should be listed there to advise the resident or whoever's renting the bike of, here's how the bikes need to be properly positioned and where they're allowed.
And we've also seen on some of the bikes, they usually have a basket, so wrapped around that basket are the, here's how to park it, here's where to park it, as part of that. And we have the ability to require certain things, so that it's easy for the operator, the user of, renter of a bike, to know exactly what they need to do.
So, as part of the ordinance as well, there will be parking prohibitions, and so, this would prohibit parking a bike at the corners of sidewalks, transit zones, landscaped areas, and curb ramps. And so, I think that's very specific in terms of, although these could be hard surfaces and parked upright, it's very clear where they cannot park bicycles. And so, if any of these bikes are parked in violation of these regulations, they must be relocated within two hours of notification to the vendor. If the vendor does not relocate the bicycle as required, the city may remove the bike, and that's when we would assess the relocation fee as proposed earlier. So, staff is proposing to implement a dockless bike share program with an evaluation period of 12 months. That gives us an opportunity to monitor the operator compliance and the market demand, as well as refine the permit requirements. We will also evaluate the value of the designated parking areas for bike shares, you can see in a couple of pictures we've attached here, that some other cities have implemented. So, the dockless bike share program would allow the bike share vendors to submit for permits and deploy a maximum of 500 bikes. The city could add additional bikes to that, increase that number from 500, if it's in the best interest of the city and at our discretion. And so, during the initial 12 months, staff will evaluate and gather data from the bike share vendors to come back after the 12 months with an update on the bike share program, the dockless bike share program, as well as a recommendation to modify, to terminate or continue the program as is. And so, staff requests Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee recommend City Council approval of the proposed program.
Press, Councilwoman?
So, our neighboring city, Scottsdale, I know has this program. Did they actually have some of these rules in place? I wondered about that. I have a child that, okay, an adult child that lives in Scottsdale, and I just see him everywhere, and so, I was curious if we learned from their experience?
So, my understanding is they do not have a permit, and they've just allowed them to kind of come in free rein, and there aren't any regulations or requirements associated in Scottsdale. I have heard that they may be reevaluating that at this moment, so...
And then, just as another question, when you say 500 bike maximum, is that per company?
Per vendor, yes.
Okay.
So, if there's five companies, it'll be 500 per vendor. Okay, thank you.
I see those Scottsdale, by Arrowhead Mall, just along the street. Yeah, it's always interesting. Any other questions? We do have two cards.
Okay, I'll wait.
Olaf, are you still here? I think he left. I don't see him. Megan McCabe?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Subcommittee Members. My name is Megan McCabe. I'm a registered lobbyist with the City of Phoenix, and I'm here today on behalf of Lime Bike to offer comments on the proposed dockless bike share program report prepared by staff. Lime Bike is a U.S.-headquartered company and is the industry leader in the space, operating dock-free bike share programs in close to 60 markets around the country, and we recently announced that in the just 10 months, we have recorded more than 10, 3 million rides. Lime is excited that Phoenix is exploring the notion of a pilot program for dockless bike share. With this new innovative and data-driven technology, Lime has helped millions of people to use this affordable, convenient, and environmentally-friendly transportation option to get to work, run errands, or meet first and last mile needs. The staff report includes several important items, emphasizing safety and parking etiquette, items that Lime agrees are important, and that we've already taken great strides to emphasize and educate our users on. However, we would encourage staff to speak directly with Lime as the industry leader regarding various aspects that are addressed in the proposed report, including understanding why operators should not be penalized for users' missed parking bikes in the form of relocation fees, understanding how dockless bike share operators work to institute realistic response times for operators, and specifying criteria to allow proper dockless bike share operators that meet said criteria to expand fleet size to incentivize high-quality service. We also encourage staff to speak directly with Lime, as there are various aspects not currently mentioned in the report, including requiring all dockless bike share bikes to have GPS devices enabled in the bikes themselves to hold operators accountable for their equipment, and requiring dockless bike share operators to share data with the city. Finally, moving forward, Lime urges the city to apply any regulatory frameworks equally to all mobility options being offered. We look forward to working closely with the Subcommittee, staff, and the city to provide a new form of transportation to residents, visitors, and commuters. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today.
And those are good ideas, too. They are, too. Haley Ritter, did you want to talk?
Sorry, I couldn't be here for item number 10, because I was in support of that as well, but I support bicycles, as all of you know. You've known me for quite a while, and I think this is a great program, because it's a lot easier. It seems a lot more, a lot less confusing for riders than, like, the grid bikes or in, you know, dockless bike system is, with GPS tracking, is very successful in other cities, and I think it's, it would be a great improvement for those of us who ride bicycles or have to ride bicycles in order to travel. And I think it's a great, great opportunity for Phoenix to start getting all of us moving on this direction in bicycle support. So, I appreciate, I'm going to try and make it to the next TNI meeting in four months when they discuss item 10 again, but I'm very much in support of item 11 as well, so, thank you.
Any comments, questions?
I have some, actually, questions.
Okay.
On page 55, it says, "Additional options the Subcommittee may consider." And then, it goes, "Required that a dockless bike only be parked in areas clearly designated, define a specific area which dockless bike shares program is allowed to operate, require bike share vendors to utilize Lock2 technology instead of wheel locking technology, and require users to lock the bikes to a fixed object when not in use in accordance with the city's bicycle parking requirements, which is similar to the City of Chicago's pilot program." Out of those three options, which ones do you recommend?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, we recommend the first dot point, you know, be evaluated, especially for downtown, in the congested areas. As you, can we go back a couple of slides to show the boxes? So, we believe that this might be an excellent solution for downtown areas, and we would look to evaluate that, so that they're nice and neat, and that's where the bikes would go after being used in the downtown area. Maybe harder to do in Councilwoman Williams, Vice Mayor Williams's neighborhood, or mine for that matter, where there may be fewer bikes, but where you would see a concentration of them, maybe near bike, we see a lot of them at transit shelters, because it is a great first and last mile option. When you go through Scottsdale and Tempe, you do see a lot of bikes clustered around transit shelters. Those might also be areas where a box designated area would be very helpful to make sure that they stay neat and out of the pedestrian paths.
So, you're saying to recommend number, the item bullet one?
Yes, and we would look for additional direction on whether there's value in the specific areas. The Lock2 technology, Mario can probably talk about this further, but we know that Chicago has received a request from the potential vendors, operators of the bike share, that this technology may not be completely available for a lot of the vendors, and would severely limit their ability to respond to the requests for proposals.
I would just want to clarify... I would just want to clarify on, when you're saying you recommending the first bullet, identifying designated areas, I think, Maria, you mean evaluating that during the first 12 months of the program?
Yeah, yes, sorry. Evaluate.
And then, coming back with recommendations on that. So, there's not, we don't have specific areas identified as of, as of right now. And so, just want to clarify that, that that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so let me get some other, let's, let's, what I am hearing, or what I am asking, is out of these, because these notes were given, it's public, says additional options the Subcommittee may consider. I'm asking, out of these three options, which ones would you want the Subcommittee to consider? I'm hearing item, the first bullet. So, now, I'm going to, in my motion, add the consideration of bike, dockless bikes only be required in areas clearly designated by the city council. What I'm hearing from you is you're saying, well, we're having a 12-month evaluation and then consider this.
Yes.
So, I'm confused.
So, so, thank you for, for clarifying, Councilwoman Pastor. So, we're, we've got kind of competing goals, one of which is to, to get an ordinance in place and a program in place fairly quickly because we know that these bikes are already established in, like we talked about with Scottsdale and Tempe, and are starting to come into the city of Phoenix as well, although I'd say not in the same, not in the same way, not in the same intensity. So, we, we do want to get an ordinance implemented and underway. So, if we, though, if we talk about establishing a designated area for bikes, for the bikes-only park, and that, that's really going to be another discussion that we need to have, which I think will take considerably longer. And we, we just want to make sure that, that we make, that there can be a full vetting of where those areas ought to be. And so, so what we're, what we would recommend is that one option, if the Subcommittee wants to move forward with an ordinance, that we could, we could still move forward with an ordinance, but evaluate, and it doesn't have to take us 12 months. We could evaluate quicker than that while we still got an ordinance underway, the possibility of making these go in designated areas and identifying where those areas ought to be.
So, I have a motion. My motion is to move to adopt the dockless bike ordinance and program with a six-month evaluation. And after the six month, to look at dockless bike only be parked in areas designated to, or areas that are designated to be parked, or I don't know how to, I need the lawyer to step in and say how to say this, or dockless bikes only to be parked in areas clearly designated by the city council.
And to clarify, Councilwoman Pastor, are you talking about just certain areas that they would have to be locked to technology or have designated parking areas?
I'm not locked to.
Or, say downtown or throughout the city?
I think throughout the city. Because I suffer, or at least District Four suffers, with bikes being parked randomly in areas and on private property and they don't know, the owners don't know how to pick it up and move it to, I guess, public property. And there's just a lot of dynamics that go along with this. And the reason why I'm very concerned about it is, as I recently tried, traveled to China, I also saw the dynamics of 500 dockless bikes just being laid out everywhere, or at one point, they were all on top of each other because they just kind of threw them on top of each other. So, I have some experience seeing it in an international, how they operate. So, I'm just saying, yes, I'm saying yes, throughout the city. And I don't know how that works, but you guys, that's where the six months and then we can evaluate and figure it out. The other pieces I would like to incorporate, that you speak with the dockless commute, bike community on some of the ideas that were just presented, but make it so that everybody, fair enough and everybody can compete, I'm assuming, for the future.
Does that make sense?
Yes. As, as part of the review at six months, can we find out if it costs us more to pick them up, to paint places, whatever, the cost analysis attached to this?
Got it, Chair.
Yes. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. I think that brings us to Citizens Comments, doesn't it? We have no cards. Do we have any future agenda items that anyone would like to put on here? Hearing none, we stand adjourned.